It is seven o'clock. We do have a formal called City Council Meeting in order. First item on the agenda is invocation given by Councilman Garena and then the pledge of both American and Texas flag led by Councilman Ferguson.
Would you bow to me, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you, denied Lord, to ask you for guidance and your wisdom, Lord, to help us make the right decisions for our citizens in Lewisville and for the state of Texas and for this country. Lord, we want to honor you, Lord, and ask for your blessings also, and in return, Lord, we bless you for everything that you do for us and by doing your will. Lord, we ask that you protect those that help protect us, from our local fire and police and city workers that work for us every day, to our soldiers and our military men that are here and abroad that protect this country and our citizens. Lord, we ask you for your blessings, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did.
I have a few presentations tonight. If I could, I'd like to ask Ms. Wilhelm if you'd come. There you are.
As you know, we're coming to a very, sometimes unpredictable time of the year as far as the weather goes, and so tonight we are actually doing a proclamation. Whereas each year brings the potential for violent weather to Texas and large portions of our state, including the city of Lewisville, can be devastating by flooding, tornadoes, windstorms, and other emergencies. And whereas the city of Lewisville Governor's Division of Emergency Management, the National Weather Service, and Federal Emergency Management Agency, which is known as FEMA, have joined together in urging all citizens to prepare for severe weather events and to educate themselves on safety strategies. And whereas Governor Rick Perry has declared the week of March 3rd through 9th, 2013, a severe weather awareness week in Texas. Now therefore, in official recognition of this statewide event, I, Dean Uchert, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim March 3rd through the 9th, 2013, a severe weather awareness week and urge everyone in our community to learn more about and to participate in severe weather preparedness activities available in the city of Lewisville proclaimed this fourth day of March, 2013. And Ms. Wilhelm is going to go over some information with you and tell you a little bit about our emergency preparedness plan that we have and give you a little bit of information about that. She does a wonderful job of heading this up, and she's kind of our overseer and overlooks us, and sometimes you get these little code red voicemails from her. This is the woman behind the code red voicemail.
Thank you. I appreciate Mayor and Council taking this opportunity to recognize the importance of severe weather awareness and urging our citizens to prepare for the upcoming months and really what can plague us throughout the year, not only during severe weather season, but throughout the rest of the year. Last year, we had a very interesting April, and I think sometimes over the years, we get a little bit complacent in our thoughts of whether the severe weather is actually going to impact us, but the 17 tornadoes in one day in the north central Texas area really helps to reinforce that need for taking those preparedness activities to heart. For our residents, we encourage some very basic things, putting together your family's communications plan. That's probably the most important piece. How are you going to let your family know that you're okay and where to meet? And getting that information across is a key part of being prepared for any type of disaster, not just severe weather. Also evaluating the risks around your home to be able to look at if we have a storm coming, are you putting things like your patio furniture and things that could easily become flying debris and cause additional damage to your house? And just making sure some of those activities are done to mitigate against the effects of severe weather. From the city's perspective, as always, this is a good time for us to talk through our plans and look through how we respond as a city to severe weather, but additionally, we have some other preparedness activities going on. Last weekend, we actually had our annual storm spotter training, which is where our storm spotters that go out and help us detect severe weather get their refresher for looking at storms from a perspective and providing that information back to the National Weather Service and the local emergency managers. We also, during that event, we have offered the opportunity for citizens to come and get some additional information on storms and to really understand how a storm develops and what to look for to know when it's going to be severe. This upcoming week, we have several public education activities going on where we'll be doing some know what to do presentations, which is our public education program. And at the end of the month, on March 23rd, we're going to do one of two of our Boy Scout Emergency Preparedness Merit Badge classes that we offer, which help the scouts in the area get their emergency preparedness merit badge. So we have several activities planned throughout the month. As always, if anybody needs help developing their emergency preparedness plan for their family or for their business, they're welcome to call the Emergency Management Division, and we can offer some of that assistance to them. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Heather. We want to appreciate, we say thank you, appreciate all that you and your crew do.
Thank you.[434.12][434.12](APPLAUSE).
And now we have a few other awards and presentations we need to make, and some of these people, as you'll see, protect us in a lot of emergency preparedness things that sometimes we see and many things that we never even know occur. Because of their heroism and their line of duty, we'd like to show them their appreciation that we have for them tonight. So Chief Perrin, if I could ask you to come forward, please, sir, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, thank you for indulging me tonight. It's my pleasure to be able to yet again recognize members of our community that helped contribute positively to public safety in the city of Lewisville. You might remember back in January, just on the heels of the Sandy Hook tragedy up in Connecticut, we had a shooting at the Vista Ridge Mall, but I'm very pleased to recognize some unique individuals that were involved in that becoming not as serious an incident as it possibly could have been. I'd like to have the Vista Ridge Security Officers John Lopez, Richard Frank, William King, and Samantha Flynn to join me down front, please. Please bear with me while I read the citation. On January 14th, 2013, at 3:45 PM, a man contacted his ex-girlfriend at her place of employment inside the Vista Ridge Mall. She did not wish to speak with him and asked him to leave before he jeopardized her job. A nearby witness contacted mall security when the man refused to leave. Security Officers Lopez and Frank responded to the disturbance while Officers William King and Samantha Flynn monitored the situation via closed circuit cameras. Vista Ridge Mall security requested assistance from the Louisville Police Department. Security Officers John Lopez and Richard Frank attempted to calm the man down and protect the employee by positioning themselves between him and the employee. The security officer stood their ground and convinced the man to leave the mall. Officer King remained on the phone with the police department as Flynn tracked the situation on camera, and Lopez and Frank followed the man to the exit. Unbeknownst to the security officers and prior to exiting the mall, the man pulled out a handgun and shot himself in full view of the security officers. Security Officer King observed what occurred via camera and informed the responding police that the man had shot himself. Police officers and paramedics arrived and determined the man was deceased. Officers John Lopez and Richard Frank stood in harm's way to protect another individual. It is the department's belief that their intervention prevented a tragic situation from ending without others harmed or killed. Officers William King and Samantha Flynn maintained their composure in a highly stressful situation in support of their colleagues, much like our dispatchers do for us in the police department. All security officers performed their duties and obtained the necessary resources to contend with the tragic situation. It is therefore my honor as Chief of Police to award Security Officers John Lopez, Richard Frank, William King, and Samantha Flynn a certificate of appreciation, along with the department's gratitude for a job well done.[620.41][620.41](APPLAUSE).
Let's get a picture with the mayor here. He's trying to get lucky to each other. (LAUGHING). As I said earlier, there's some times that we don't know what all goes wrong behind the scene to make sure that our lives go on as normal as they do each and every day. And with that, we have another set of presentations that we want to make. If I could get Mr. Williams to come forward here. You know, sometimes we don't realize things are going on around us, and sometimes there's certain people here in our community that have to step forward, and these people that we're going to recognize now sometimes step forward, once again, put their life on the line so that we are better protected and so that we are able to be safe in our everyday life. Turn it over to you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Caleb Williams. I'm with the Texas Municipal Police Association. Currently part of the grant program called Leaders. It's a DWI reporting system, and it helps streamline reporting for DWIs to help maximize the officers' times, get them out on the road, and also enhance the enforcement of DWIs, gets these intoxicated individuals off the road via alcohol, medication, or illegal drugs. So you have three of your officers here that were in the top 10 of the entire state for DWIs. Let me give you just a real quick, I know everybody doesn't want me to talk on forever, and I won't, but just a real quick deal on DWIs and how big of a deal it is in facing our nation, like the mayor said, that people don't even realize. About six months ago or so, we went over 2,000 deaths in Afghanistan. And I'm a military guy myself, so that's a huge thing. It's heartbreaking, but it took us 10 years to do that. 10 years to do 2,000 deaths in a war zone. Last year alone, in the state of Texas, we killed 2,700 people for intoxication on our roadways. We're already over 300 this year, and it's just rising. So we have officers here that, I'm not going to give the exact number, but they're in the top 10 of the entire state. You have three of them in your agency alone, and they're going up against some big dogs like DPS, Houston, San Antonio, some of the big agencies. And you have three in your city. Your city's also perennially on top of DWIs in the state for using Leaders. They're constantly up there at the top, and they're just a shining star for the entire state of Texas as far as DWI enforcement goes. So, top 10. To put that into somewhat numbers-wise, that means they've probably gone, or they have gone over 100 DWIs in a year. I'm not, don't know the exact figure, and I'm not going to give that out, but that means that most likely, accounting for days off, they're getting a DWI rest every other night. That's huge. I believe in my heart, I know for sure that they've saved several lives this year by themselves. So whatever you guys are paying them, they've earned it for sure. I'd like to go ahead and award these. For this year, 2012, top 10, Officer Montoya.[833.01][833.01](APPLAUSE). Since its inception, beginning of this early 2000s, we're going through a news change with the Leaders Program with Windows 8 and as everything's changing. So we've come out with a new award this year, and two of your officers have gotten that. It's called the Leaders All-Star, and that means they're in the top five officers in the state all time with Leaders as far as DWIs in the entire state, and you have two of those. One of those who is also top 10 this year, and he's made the Leaders All-Star Award, is Officer Clements.[887.31][887.31](APPLAUSE). And lastly, this last officer was also in our top 10 for this year. He's an All-Star Leader, so he's in the top five of the entire program, and he's also gone over his 500th case in the system, so he's getting another award for being in the Leaders 500 Club, which is a very select few, and that's Officer Persinger.[923.01][923.01](APPLAUSE).
You know, that just goes to show one of the reasons why when we do our surveys throughout the city every year, one of the things that comes back the most that our citizens are satisfied with is feeling safe here in this community of Lewisville, and we thank these gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, that do that each and every day, and we thank you and God bless you for what you do. Mayor, I notice a lot of the family members are with us tonight. We want to thank them for allowing the officers to have the time with us.
Thank you very much, Councilman Durham. I appreciate that, and I apologize for not stressing that. I usually try to remember that because without the sacrifice that those family members do, giving up their time with their family members and their friends, they wouldn't be here to do that. Thank you very much for reminding me.
Next item is the visitor citizen form. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I do not have any cards filled out on that this time. Consent agenda. All the following items in the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Did not have any, or anyone asked to have any items pulled. Councilman Ferguson?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve the consent agenda, second by Councilman Garena. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is consideration of a variance of the Louisville City Code, Section 6-1Z03, regarding acceptance of a five-foot street easement in lieu of a five-foot right-of-way dedication on Keely Avenue related to the improvement at the existing foam supplies at 590 Benjamin's Way, as requested by G and A Consultants, Inc., on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a 2.179 site zone light industrial within the Pinell subdivision, Phase IV. Foam Supplies is located at the site and is proposing paving improvements for parking, additional access, and outside storage. Staff has reviewed and approved the engineering site plan for foam supplies, subject to the City Council approval of the variance regarding acceptance of a five-foot street easement in lieu of a five-foot right-of-way dedication on Keely Avenue. Recommendation is council approve the variance as set forth in the above caption. I did have a card here filled out by Mr. Vaughn Booker with G and A Consultants, and he's here to answer any questions that we might have. Does Council have any questions on this? Okay. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the variance as stated.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve the variance as requested, and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is consideration of a variance to Louisville City Code, Chapter 9, Article 4, Section 9-5-542, the Old Town Development Ordinance is not, Old Town Development Ordinance, to not require an old town development plan when fire protection is added to the site, and to waive the required variance request fee for a proposed building remodeled located at 200 South Mill Street, as requested by Christian Community Action. The applicant is developing plans to redesign an existing building from a retail store and donation drop-off facility into a retail store and children's learning center. As such, the installation of an automatic fire sprinkler system is required. The Old Town Development Ordinance requires the submission of a new old town development plan if additional fire protection is required. The applicant is requesting a variance to not submit a new old town development plan, which is consistent with the requirements contained in the city's general development ordinance. The applicant is also requesting the waiver of the required $350 variance fee as they are nonprofit community service agency. Recommendation, staff is at council approve the variances as set forth in the caption. We do have a couple cards here. One is from Engineer Steve Holmeyer. If we do have any questions, he's available to answer any questions. And then we also have one from Mr. Ron Batts, who is with CCA, and I think he'd like to come up and speak.
If you would just give your names and address for the record, thank you. Yes. Ron Batts, 200 South Mill Street here in Lewisville. And I want to thank you, Mayor, and to the council for allowing me a few minutes to share with you, but we thought it would be appropriate to show you our overall plans across the street, so to speak, and we're very excited about what this bodes, we believe, for the future of downtown Lewisville and Old Town. So I'm going to quickly run through some slides and give you an overview of what we plan to do over the next three years. And as you saw, the first slide said building for the next 40 years. This last February 22nd, just a week or so ago, we celebrated our 40th anniversary of serving our community. But if you look at this overview map prepared by our architect, to orient you, the resale store that's shown on the bottom left of that is the current location of our resale store. Behind that, you see something called the Exhibition Hall. That is currently where we process all of our products before they go to stores. Of course, that's moving to the new center in Flower Mountain. And behind that, there's a building called Youth in Motion, and that is the Children's Learning Center that we mentioned earlier in the variance request. To the right, you'll see a new expanded clinic and an area, Family Services. We'll talk quickly about those. And then to the far right and up a little bit, you see a new location for our computer training lab and for a new building development. So I want to start with what's going to open this coming fall, 2013, and it is our Youth in Motion Building. This was funded by the generosity of the Texas Motor Speedway Children's Charities Founder's Grant, which is a big deal to win, and we won it with our concept. We're also going to be in partnership with a group called SciTech. They're based in Frisco, enormously successful partnership between them and the city of Frisco, which we hope to equal or exceed in our facility here. To give you an idea of what this facility is designed to do, it's designed to teach STEM, that's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, to K through eighth graders in the Title I schools. So in partnership with the LISD and the other schools in our area, we really want to bring these kids up to a level of excitement. These are just some of the type of things that are seen in the SciTech environment in Frisco. You can see fun, it's like a learning center museum. This is a rendering of what we're moving forward with, with our architect. Again, it will have a distinct raceway theme. You can see the car on the front marking the entrance to it, a new entrance. This is the inside. It definitely has a raceway flavor on the inside with bleachers and a number of learning exhibit places. There will be two classrooms, which will also be hosting birthday parties on the weekend. And then you see, this is another view looking into the Exhibition Hall. The Exhibition Hall, which is an outside view of it, will be used to house at least twice a year significant exhibits, the type of thing they're currently hosting in Frisco, one of which drew about thousands of visitors to come in a learning environment. That'll be open to our community, and we plan to do the same here. It'll also be the home of our every-year back-to-school store and our Christmas store. The third phase of this project would be to remodel our store. It's pretty tired, so we're going to redo that and make it look consistent with what our other stores currently look like. The next phase we plan to launch would be what we're calling the Center for Excellence. This is taking space that is currently storage area, and we're going to construct a two-story facility there, which will have five classrooms, offices, a large conference room. And this is a layout of what the two floors will look like. And we'll have a virtual studio there, where we'll actually be broadcasting from Lewisville to our other remote retail locations, training materials to help people break the cycle of poverty by getting better jobs, like becoming a manager of a store, which you can earn a living wage as a single mom and be out of poverty doing that. The next thing we want to do is upgrade our pantry, and we're calling it an investment to make it the Central Market of food pantries. I don't mean to offend anybody here from Tom Thumb or any other stores, but we do want to make it look like this is like an upgraded grocery store. This is what our current produce department looks like, and this is what we want to make it look like. This is a shot from Central Market. Another one. This is what the rest of our vegetable produce looks like, and this is what we want to make it look like. So we want it to be such a great environment to shop in that people would almost want to be poor just to go there and shop. The environment would be that great. This is our frozen food area. You can see pretty bleak. It's actually broken. This is the rest of our frozen food department, and this is what we want to make it look like in a nice, open configuration. And the last thing we plan to do is we're calling it the Mayo Clinic of Affordable Healthcare. As you know, our clinic is very successful here, and we have a great partnership with the hospital here in town, where we take a lot of the load off their emergency room. Well, we plan to expand our clinic in both hours it's open and in facilities. There are a couple of shaded areas you see here that we'll be moving. We'll be moving our computer training lab, which currently has eight training stations, to a new location with 16 training stations, and we'll effectively be doubling the number of examining rooms from five to 10, thereby doubling our capacity. We also plan, in partnership with the hospital, to be open at nights and on more Saturdays. We're currently now planning to be open three Saturdays soon, four Saturdays a month, so we'll be able to, again, take a bigger share of the load off of our hospital. So this is a plan that extends really through about 2015, and the city has been such a great partner with us through the years. We wanted you to know how excited we are about that partnership and about the investment we're planning to make for the future to take care of our citizens better. We're currently serving about one out of every three poverty-level families in Southern Denton County. Our bold goal would be, in seven years, to basically eradicate poverty in our community, so people would have jobs and pay taxes. I know that makes John happy, so thank you.
Well, we want to thank you, Mr. Batts, for what you've done. I know you've recently come on board, and you've really kind of come on running and done a great job there at CCA, just like they always have in the past 39 years, so we appreciate all that you've done, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions? Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve as presented, a second by Councilman Garena. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, consideration request for various pieces of Louisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Article 3, Section 6-54A, engineering site plan requirements, Article 5, Section 6-92, paving improvements for Valley Ridge Boulevard, Article 6, Section 6-121, landscaping requirements, Article 9, Section 6-181, brick veneer gateway requirements, and Chapter 5, Article 3, Section 5-94, dimensions for fire apparatus, access roads for the proposed Lewisville Police and Fire Training Addition located on Treatment Plant Road. The city of Lewisville Police and Fire Department desired to provide a 5,000-square-foot addition for classrooms and a 1,900-square-foot apparatus bay to the current training facility. The engineering site plan varies, request, engineering site plan variances requested are, A, to waive the 80% brick or stone veneer requirement, B, waive the required improvements for the proposed Valley Ridge Boulevard, C, waive the requirement for additional landscaping adjacent to the public street on-site. These three variances were granted on December 16th, 2002, by City Council. An additional fourth variance is requested. Allow two small sections of the existing fire lane to remain at a 20-foot width as opposed to the current required 24-foot width. Recognition is council approve the variances as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Garena?
I'd like to approve the variances as presented.
Second.
Have a motion to approve variances as presented by Councilman Garena, second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is consideration of a Brownsville Assessment Program application for the property at 640 State Highway 121 Business. Since the city has awarded, was awarded Brownsville's assessments funds in September of 2009, staff has been working with property owners and potential buyers to facilitate investigation for petroleum and hazardous material contaminants. Denton County Transit Authority, the owner of 77.5 acres located at 640 State Highway 121 Business, has submitted an application for participation in the program. The Brownfields Advisory Committee unanimously recommended approval of this The Brownfields Advisory Committee unanimously, unanimously recommended approval of this Brownfields Assessment Program application at its meeting on February fifth, two thousand and thirteen. Recommendation is city council approve the Brownfield Assessment Program application for the property at six-forty State Highway One Twenty-One Business. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve as written.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilor to approve as written, and a second by Councilman Grinnon. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us to reports. Nika? Bob? Chief? Linda?
Yes, sir.
Chief?
No, sir.
It's sure good to see all the support of the other officers and the family members that were here tonight.
Yes, sir.
Tell them we thank them very much. Carol, everything going all right?
Good.
May we get some rain this weekend, we hope. Well, it's sure nice to see you up front there, Mr. Conkey.
Always a pleasure to be here, Mayor.
Yeah, right. Go ahead.
Due to technical difficulties, Councilman Ferguson asked me to fill in for the MCL Grand Events Report for you this evening. There's three items in March I'd like to make you aware of. The first is this weekend, the ninth, will be our second concert in the Texas Tune Series. It's the duo of Andy Gullhorn and Jill Phillips. By the way, Jill, I believe, is a former Dove Award nominee. Wonderful singer-songwriters, have a songwriting workshop during the day, they'll perform that evening. Next week, we have for three days, the Act Fest State Contest. They've held their regionals and their locals. Now they're having the state. That'll be ten plays in three days from troops around the state. That is generating hotel room nights because eight of those groups are from outside North Texas. And at the end of the month, on the twenty-ninth, the Johnny Crawford Orchestra will be performing a concert. Johnny Crawford, you might know, is Mark McCain from the Rifleman TV Show. After his performing days, he started a wonderful big band orchestra that tours internationally, and they'll be stopping in Louisville on the twenty-ninth. And then not in MCL Grand, but also noteworthy for the month of March, March twentieth through twenty-fourth, the week after the school spring break, the Panda Cup International Soccer Showcase returns to Toyota of Louisville Railroad Park. It's the fourth year. It's actually the first group that signed a contract to have an event at the park, and they will have teams from Colombia and Argentina. They'll have multiple women's college varsities, and that event also produces room nights, somewhere around four hundred of them.
Thank you, sir. Brenda? Mr. Ferris, sir? Mr. Beck? Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Gilmore? I'm sorry, Councilman Grinnon, I'm sorry.
I have two things. Number one is, well, this weekend was the state of Texas birthday, one hundred and seventy-seven years of Texas independence. On our second, I noticed that Mr. Conkey's wearing his, you know, Texan tie there. Just want to say that it's just great to be, have this great state that we live in, and just, if it wasn't for Texas, we wouldn't really have the United States that we have today. They played a big part in America's history and its growth. It's just something to really appreciate living here. Had to spend the, this weekend with my regiment on drill, and we had a regimental mess Saturday night, and it was very patriotic and very Texan, and it was a great time. A second thing is, CCA is going to do expanding, therefore, there are a lot of volunteer opportunities. So I encourage the citizens of Louisville that if you want to work in our community, CCA is a great place to be. So if you can go over there and sign up, you know, put your name in the hat to help out, there's going to be a lot of things that they're going to need help with when they expand here, and they can sure use your help. Thank you.
Councilman Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Our local award-winning Keep Louisville Beautiful has their spring cleanup, and I know it's April twentieth, and that's planning ahead, but we need large groups of people. They've been breaking records, event after event, and let's keep that growth going. We'll be cleaning up from nine to noon all around the city, and there are great awards for various teams and groups and organizations. So if you want more information, just go to keeplewisvillebeautiful.org, and they do a wonderful job for our city.
Mr. King? Councilman Ferguson?
Just one particular note. I had the pleasure of attending the North Texas Regional Water Planning Conference this past Friday. There's a lot of legislation in the state legislature this year on water. In fact, it's unquestionably the number-one topic, so I'm very glad I went, learned a lot of things I didn't know, and we'll want to keep an eye on what's going through the legislature this year because it will affect the future of this area very dearly and deeply. So, other than that, I'm feeling great, which is good, so.
Councilman Vaughn? Go ahead, sir.
No, sir.
No, nothing? Okay.
Nothing, thank you.
Counselor? Liz? Also, we want to give one thank you, sir, for the service you do each and every day and for being here tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And Councilman Vaughn, I once again want to say thank you for filling in for me at the Chamber of State of the City's address. I really appreciate that. It was kind of a last-moment thing I had to step out of, but once again, I understand you did an excellent job, so I say thank you very much. And I'm really excited to hear that continuously the Toyota Louisville Railroad Street Park and the MCL Grand is continuing to just break records on the number of people coming in from outside the community, filling our hotel rooms, eating at our restaurants, and shopping at our stores. I think it's two of the best investments this city's made in several years, so once again, we want to thank everybody that does all that. With that, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney pending litigation, City of Louisville versus Page-Sutherland Page LP and PSP Architects Engineers, Inc., case number two-zero-one-dash-two, two-zero-one-two dash three-zero-eight-six-four dash two-one-one, two-hundred-and-eleventh Judicial District of Denton County, Texas, Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, real estate property acquisition, and Section five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven, economic development deliberation regarding economic development negotiations we will now convene in the closed section. Yeah, somewhere else. We'll convene back into regular session. Is the action to be taken, counsel?
Yes, Mayor. I move to accept the mediator's proposal in the City of Louisville versus Page-Sutherland Page LP and PSP Architects Engineers Incorporated, cause number twenty-twelve-dash-three-zero-eight-six-four dash two-eleven, in the two-hundred-and-eleventh Judicial District of Denton County, Texas, and authorize the city manager or his designee and the city attorney or her designee to sign the necessary papers.
We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any further action?
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilman Ferguson, second. By Councilman Grinnon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That one's good.